It's been awhile. And welcome to the Magical Bali Toastmaster Meeting at 4th of September 2020. Tonight, I'm going to be your Toastmaster of the meeting, or TOM. And what is that? Basically, I'm the one who is in charge of this meeting. And I'm going to lead all of you to be enjoying this meeting and welcome. Of course, if we are going to do a meeting, we tonight are having a team of the day, which is, I'm going to share to you, seize the moment with the word of the day, inquisitive. And why did we choose this team? Because this team is really embody this energy. Like this energy sees the moment. If you want to do it, if you wanted to win, you have to do it now. You seize the moment and we all can become a winner. And this is why, as you can see from the flyer and also from the team, it's all about energy, energy, energy. And I know all of you are coming tonight to become the winner. And of course, before I explain to you the team for the team or the meeting agenda, the meeting structure for tonight, I like to have not just one people, but a team of people who are going to help run this meeting. And they basically are part of what we call a GE team, the General Evaluator Team. And our GE for tonight is is an American who lives in Bali for quite some time. He's quite settled here and is military member. And he's going to give you a military-style general evaluation. So please welcome our GE for tonight, Benjamin Witakka.
Thank you, Toastmaster Reno. So, General Evaluators, what is my job? My role is to observe this whole entire meeting from the start to the end. And of course, at the end of that, I'll give my overall evaluation of how we can improve and what I liked about it. But I do have a team of great leaders as well that will help me evaluate the overall parts. So let me first introduce our grammarian. This guy is, he's a nice guy. That's, you know, he's a nice guy, he's a businessman. You'll never see him without a smile on his face. And if you need to talk to someone, he's that kind of guy. So let me introduce our grammarian today, Toastmaster Krishna.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, Ben. What's not to smile about? You got a happy life. We're alive. We're fine. Alright, everybody, tonight, I am your grammarian. My role is to make sure to note down the good use of the English language. So if you give a beautiful quote, I'll write it down and I'll mention to all the beautiful people here how beautiful that quote was. And I will also look for the improper use of the English language. So if we have a few wrong usage of the tenses or whatnot, I will be here to just advise a different way to do it. The second role that I had tonight is the word of the day counter. So what is the word of the day? As Reno mentioned, the word of the day is inquisitive, which means to be curious or inquiring. To use it in a sentence is, oh, he's very chatty and inquisitive, asking a lot of questions. To make a little competition, I will write down how many times the word of the day is mentioned when you speak. The more times you say the word of the day, the more finger snaps you get. And for the audience here, when you hear the word of the day inquisitive, snap your fingers. Because that's a skill, to be able to put in the word of the day in your speech. That's it for now. Back to you, General E evaluator Ben.
Thank you, Krishna. Alright, my next role for my team is our uh counter. And if you're new to Toastmasters, you're really wondering what an uh counter is. So we have our karaoke champion of Magical Bali Toastmasters and just an all-around good guy as well. Let me introduce you to our uh counter Toastmaster, Ajay.
Thank you for the introduction, man. Well, so those are the examples of things that I'm gonna note down tonight. As speakers, sometimes we unconsciously say those things. And of course, we want to better ourselves, right? So that's why I'm here, to help you note down on the unnecessary words, some clicker sound, awkward pause, and repeated words that you unconsciously do in your speech. And I'll be back in the end of the meeting with the report. So I wish you good luck and see you again. Back to G.
Alright, thank you, uh counter Toastmaster Ajay. Our next role, for me, is probably one of the most important roles. As Reno mentioned that I was in the military, so I'm very finicky about time. And time is very important and time is very precious, so we don't want to waste it. And our next role-taker is our timer. She is full of energy non-stop. If you want to have a party and you have a lot of boring guests, just call her and she will spark up the rest of the party. So let me introduce you to our timer of the evening, Toastmaster IU.
Everything in life has its limit. In Toastmaster, we call it time allocation. So everybody, every speakers, we have, Reno, can you help me with the screenshot? Yeah, sorry, the screenshot, this is your allocation. So please remind yourself for all speakers. At the end of the background, at the end of, every time I place the green, yellow, and red, and then at the end of the red, after 30 seconds, I will give you an audible sound with kind of bell. That's all from me. And if you need to pin me, you can pin me over your cursor to my video and then you will see three dots on the right top. Click that and pin timer. Thank you. Back to G.
Alright, IU and IU's puppies, thank you for making appearance. Fun part about technology, you never know what you're gonna expect. And we do love guests, people, and animals alike. Now, my last role-taker, part of my team, this gentleman here is quite new, less than a month as a Toastmaster, which is pretty dope to already start taking roles. He is going to explain what a ballot counter is. And I think it's one of the most fun roles because you can enjoy the party as well. So let me introduce you to our newest member, Toastmaster Ping.
Hi, everybody. So what ballot counter does is to help us to become more democratic. So if you are inquisitive about who is going to be the next and the best speaker, please vote, okay? What's the end of the speaking session? Please vote so that we are aware of who is going to be the winner. So thank you so much, everybody. Looking forward to the speech.
Awesome. Thank you, Toastmaster Ping. Again, this great guy, welcome to the club. Hopefully, we'll get to see you guys and see you in person soon because that's what this is all about. Alright, so you'll hear more from me later in the meeting when I get to introduce the evaluators of the speeches, I believe. And of course, at the end of the meeting. So let me give it back to our Tom. It would be Toastmaster Hats and Toastmaster Reno.
Thank you, Ben. Thank you, General E evaluator and all of the team. And that is the GE, the General Evaluation Team for you. And what you need to do, especially for all of us who are going to speak, try to seize the attention because the team of tonight is seize the moment. So we try to seize every single moment that we can. So that's the GE team. Moving on, before we jump to the meeting, I'm going to share to you the meeting agenda for tonight. I just made a very simple summary of the meeting agenda. And it's going to look like this. So basically, we have prepared speech, table topics, and evaluation at the bottom. And tonight, we're going to have four speaker. So four people are going to battle tonight in order to be the best speaker and screen to be voted at the end of the meeting. And after each session, we're going to have timers report and we'll see who is going to eligible to be voted or not. So for all of you, prepared speech, table topic, tabletop is the most special, especially for all of you that doesn't have a chance to speak or evaluate. It's your time to shine, it's your time to seize the moment. And of course, at the end, we're going to have someone who is going to follow us. Alright, that's the introduction. And we are now going to enter to the main meeting. And we're going to start with prepared speech. And since we have four speaker, the way that we do it here is that we introduce the evaluator and then the evaluator will explain, will introduce to you the speaker and explain their project. And let's start. First, first, we're going to have our first evaluator, which is the leader of the table topic Tuesday. And if you really wanted to know about that, please come to these people. But tonight is going to be evaluator for our first speaker, Yulianni. And please welcome Melita.
Alright, alright. Our first speaker, she just started her Toastmasters journey at Magical Bali. However, she is very inquisitive to read the dreams and also to read her goals. She will do her evaluations and feedback first speech for the level one projects to A. And then the purpose statements of her speech this evening is for the member to present a speech on any topic, receive feedback, and apply the feedback to a second speech. And also to risk to present a speech and receive feedback from the evaluator. Alright, without no further ado, let's give a big applause to Yulianni with her speech title, "The Power of Dream." The power of dream, Yulianni.
Thank you, Melita. Good evening, everyone. My name is Yulianni. And today, I'm going to tell about my stories and how I fulfill my trip. Kecara ilmu sampai negeri Cina. This Indonesian proverb has meaning. If we want something, we have to work hard to achieve it. We need to have a trip, trip that we want to heading to in our life. Dreams that lead us to actions in how we fulfill our dream. Dreams that we will work hard to achieve it and that's what we call our success. I have a dream since I was young. I want to travel to overseas, to country that I only saw from little, only from TV. I always amazed with a winter time, snowfall, and smoky breath, roast cheeks. So to me, that's really sounds cool. After graduated from senior high school, I went to Surabaya. I took one year diploma degree. The purpose was that I want to get the job quickly. Before the graduations, I proactively looking for a job. So I was lucky that I got two job offer. So I got confused which one I should choose. So I asked to my teacher, "Iputina, would you please to help me? I have two job offer. One is for finance positions and the other one is for hospitality industry." And she advised me, "Go to the finance one, do it with your best. I believe someday it will lead you to success." And believe it or not, that's the really important milestone in my life that from work I can achieve my dreams. I have one country that really interesting to be and give a good memory. That is China. Why China? Here. I want to see Penda and also I want to go to the Great World, the seven wonders in the world. So I got an opportunity to go to China. I went there with my husband. And when I arrived there, I was so amazed with the culture, with the food, with anything that I want to see. I checklist everything and finally, I'm able to see. One thing that I really amazed also is the culture in China, a campaign. So one of a partner company invite us for a dinner and we do campaign, so much fun. But beside the happy part, actually, there is also one incident that almost ruin everything. When I get back from Tiananmen Square, I hear a rickshaw. The guy was very polite and he can speak quite good English. So I trusted him and he also offered me quite cheap fare. So I said, "Okay, let's go." This guy took me to the subway station. But on the way, he actually drove me to nowhere and suddenly he stopped. I was quite surprised, what happened? And you know, he just said, "Okay, I want more money." "What? More money? You said only 3 RMB, but in fact not. He asked me for 300." And oh my God, I was kind of speakless. So calmly, I said to him, "Okay, let's go to the ATM and settle everything." And when I arrived there, give him money, I said to him, "Okay, don't bother to drive me anywhere else, but just stop here. I will just walk by myself." But you know, that situations actually turns into positive because somehow I can see something else outside Beijing, which I never planned before. So I'm still happy. So, fellow Toastmasters, kecara ilmu sampai negeri Cina. You also can have a dream, set any dream that you like, put it high, make effort. And hopefully someday, you can also achieve it and you feel more success on it. Thank you very much.
Wow. I have a dream. I have a dream to go to China. And it's a really amazing speech telling us about the experience in China. And even though it's not that long, but we really did enjoy your story. So thank you so much for giving us the speech. And moving on, we're going to move to our second speaker. But before that, I'd like to introduce to you the evaluator for the second speaker, which is the owner of the Asian Sustainable Fashion, which is doing sustainable fashion. And yeah, everyone knows, especially here in Bali, which is Natalie Chayati.
Thank you, Reno, for that wonderful introduction. Everyone knows me. Okay, thank you. It's my privilege to introduce our second speaker for tonight. And the second speaker is Reza Siragar or Reza Pakhlevi Siragar. He came from Medan, but he has been working in Bali for quite some time. So tonight, he will be delivering Level One Project Three from Pathways Research and Presenting. The purpose of this project is for him to learn or review basic research methods and present a well-organized, well-researched speech on any topic. So I would expect a well-organized and well-delivered speech. It can be humorous, informational, or any style that he chooses. And this is not a report of the content of researching and presenting project. Reza is an inquisitive fellow, so I'll be very expectant of what he will bring on the table tonight. With the time five to seven minute and the speech title, "English is More Than a Language." "English is More Than a Language," Reza Siragar.
Alright, thank you so much for the Natalie. And first of all, I need to access for the side screen. Alright, okay. Thank you for the access. Something impossible to be possible. It ever happened in my life. When the time, I cannot speak English at all, even say my name is. Because at that time, I imagined that English is a monster. But right now, English works very well to me, even still a monster, but good. I remember when I was in the university, English is a key for me to gain pretty much information to help me accomplish my undergraduate tasks. And after the university, again, English helped me to gain career in my workplace. Because one of the reason why my company hired me because I able to communicate in English. And after that, right now, English is connecting me with the really precious circle. I have the relation well with you all, fellow Toastmasters. So having English as a skill that has helped me so much. So which, based on my research topic for today, I really wonder and want to know English and be really inquisitive about it. And yeah, that I want to know is why English is so common language in Indonesia? And also, when did it start and why it's become important? So here we go. English firstly introduced to us as an Indonesian in 1914. And that time, English was first told to Indonesian when the elementary, when the second, when the elementary school were established. So it's a best on the louder in the journal, the status, and the function, English in Indonesia. And the word recognize, English is a global or international language. And do you know the global and the global status of English is partly due to the number of people who speak it? And based on the cut through on the book, "English Across Culture", approximately 1,500 million speakers of English worldwide, consisting of around 750 million speakers of English as a foreign language in the expanding circle such as country China, Asia, Indonesia, Israel, Japan, Korea, and so on. And the next, in the 430 million speaker in the outer circle, whom, I mean like the country makes English as a second language such as Bangladesh, Ghana, India, Kenya, and so on. And also, the last 329 million L1 speaker, it means the country who makes English as a first language in the inner circles like USA, UK, Canada, Australia, and New Zealand. Because considering the recognition of English is extent, English have an important function in the particular urgent sector. And based on the crystal david on the journal, "English as a Global Language", English has a role and function such as in the economic and business. USA position as a word number one, economic search as a pool on global business. It means organizations who wants to enter the international market are not likely to be able to do without English. And also the businesses which has international offices, they have to have a staff must speak English. And the last in the media, and the next in the media, the word of current information proportion, 557% of the words newspaper are published in English. And also, English dominant global and radio broadcasting, I mean. And also, the English language film dominate cinema with above 80%. In the communication, much of the word communication are done in English. 80% of the words electronically stored information in English. In international relation, English is one of official language in United Nations and it makes English maybe used as a lingua franca. And in education, a large proportion of scientists' papers published in all subjects are in English. And the last in the international travel and safety, English use phone navigation at sea and air traffic control. So fellow Toastmasters and guests, based on those information from several sources, see that how impactful, how important, how powerful English fulfill the urgent sector in our world. So I will back to, I will back to my title and I will ask you for my casting. Do you still think English is just a language? Back to Tom. Thank you.
Alright. Wow. English is definitely more than just a language. I'm definitely agree with that statement, especially with a lot of, with all the facts that you show to us. It really proves that English is not just like a language that we speak. It actually has even more potential than it's, than it's just a language. And thank you, Reza, for sharing that. Really love it. Moving on, our next speaker is Danny Syria. And he's going to be evaluated by one of our MBTC member, which is a doctor from Lombok Island, and she is Amelia Ratnata. Please welcome.
And she is Amelia Ratnata. Please welcome.
Well, I'm actually a pharmacist. Okay, so the next person is actually our SAA in MBTC. He is a programmer slash also gamer. And I just found out that he has a big interest in investment. Today he will deliver level one project three on dynamic leadership pathway. And the project is researching and presenting. In this project, he will learn how to research a one team of the speech and presented it. Please welcome Danny Surya with the ta- with the title DCA versus LSI. DCA versus LSI, Danny Surya.
See the screen? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Philotosmuster. Do you know when the best time to invest? The best time to invest is twenty years ago. Do you know when the best, well, the second best type to invest? The second best time to invest is today. Today I will talk about DCA, no large cost averaging. And I will talk about LSI or lump sum investment. Also, I will talk about why LSI is better than DCA. Okay. Now we already know when the best time to invest, but we still doesn't know where we can invest our money. So we'll continue with some place to invest our money. So there's gold, second bond, third is stock. So one goal is, goal is precious metal that we use as jewelry or we can use our gold bar. This have return, same with the inflation rate. Uh, and then second bond. So what bond see? Bond is promise to give interest for our debt. It could be company bond or government bond. Bond usually give fixed rate as coupon and this slightly higher than inflation rate. The third one is stock. So what stock is? Stock is share of company ownership in fraction. This stock being trade in same market, so the price can be up or if the price can be down. So if you invest in the correct stock, you can have higher than inflation rate. Which is for example, you invest in blue stock, blue chip stock. Okay. So we already know when and where we can invest our money. But we doesn't know what way to invest our money. So in in investment world, many visitor have the bath about DCA and lump sum, which is the better method of investment. So I will explain to you about this method. So first DCA. So what DCA is? DCA is we invest some of our money in continuous time in some period. So for, to be more clear, I will give you more example. So I have twelve coin, as you can see in the screen. And then I have five glass. So if I using this DCA method, then I will put one coin in one glass every month in specific time. So for example, if you are, if you uh, like me, just uh stop and you will get paid at every twenty-five of the month. So you can invest every twenty-five of the month. You doesn't care if the stock price is up or the stock price is down. So you just invest your money in twenty-five of the month. Second, I will talk about lump LSI. So what LSI is? Uh, LSI is very easy. So we invest all our money just one time. So that's LSI. So for the coin and glass example, I put twelve coin in one glass. So that's it. Already finish the, the investment. That's very easy. And based on segment, also Polish and Vimer, LSI outperform DCA in United States by thirty-four percent in period of nineteen twenty-six until twenty eleven by two point three percent every month. And that in United Kingdom in period nineteen seventy-six until twenty eleven, LSI outperform DCA by thirty-four percent by two point two percent every year. And in Australia, in period of nineteen eighteen, twenty-eighty-four until twenty eleven, LSI outperform DCA by one point three percent every year. So we already know that LSI outperform DCA. But why DCA is still popular in today? So based on sprinkle, LSI have uh advantage is return more than DCA. Also give dividend more than DCA. So what dividend? Dividend is profit sharing from the company for the stock that we ha- have. And the advantage of DCA is we put our emotional away in our investment. Because we already decide when we want to invest and how much we want to invest. Also, if you doesn't have that much money, you can invest in smart way by using DCA. Okay. So today we already learned about what is DCA? What is LSI? Why LSI outperform DCA? And ready learn about when the best time to invest. So when the best time to invest? Your best time to invest is twenty years ago. And when the best, second best time to invest, second best time to invest is today. So everyone, let's invest today and be rich together. Back to you, Philotosmuster.
Alright. Whoa. Is that Danny? I mean, let me share something. For those of you who doesn't know Danny, he's the hacker from our club Magical Bali. Usually is going to talk about how to hack a bank account to add a number into your bank account. But it's kind of surprising that he's teaching us how to do investing tonight. But overall, love it. It's, it's really nice to see you doing something else rather than you usually miss. And yeah, tense for stepping out of your comfort zone. Thank you, Danny.
Thank you.
And we are not done yet. We keep, we still have one small speaker. And she is known, especially here Magical Bali, as mother of us all, which is Miranda. And since she is the big mother for us, she is going to be evaluated also by a very experienced Toastmaster from Surabaya, which is also area director now. And with no further ado, let's welcome Amelia Fabriani.
Thank you MBTC for having me. Uh, I, I don't think I need to introduce Miranda anymore since I think she is the famous person in the fashion G. So everyone know her. And it's a bit funny that this afternoon when IG asked my uh availability, he asked that Amelia will be Miranda's evaluator. Is it okay? So you know how intimidating she is. Just kidding, just kidding. Alright, so DTM Miranda will deliver her project on level four, project number one, managing difficult audience. I will read the purpose of her project. The purpose of this project is for the member to practice the skills needed to address audience challenges when he or she presents outside of the Toastmasters Club. So DTM Miranda, second motherhood at fifty-two, second motherhood at fifty-two, DTM Miranda.
Okay, good evening Toastmasters and fellow Toastmasters from around the globe. Tonight, I'm going to speak, but before I start speaking, I may have some question and answer session in the end. So if you have any question, please note or any comments, please note down that so you can, we can address that in the end. And also, if you have anything to put on your device, I ca- I would like to ask you to put that um until later. Okay, so I don't know if Amelia has explained my project, but let's, let's go on with this. And this is going to be very surprising for me and I think for you all. So do you guys know who this is? Yeah, Snoopy. Alright. Everybody knows Snoopy. Um, how many, like, you, you all know Snoopy, but do you know what breed Snoopy is?
Beagle.
Beagle, yes. Beagle is a hunting dog originating from England. And because of their sharp sense of smell, beagles are often used by the police for blood hounds for illicit trades. So October twenty-fourteen, Akira, Gojira, and Aya came to my life. Three Beagle puppies from one litter and my life was forever changed. At fifty-two, I became a mother for the second time. I first became a mother when I was twenty-eight. At that age, I was still struggling with personal problems, rocky relationship, and just starting a new career. So I couldn't give my son Govinda the attention, love, and care he needed. I'm the first to admit that I was a bad mother then and would not have won Mother of the Year award. Committing to raise puppies is like committing to a long-term relationship.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Yeah, think so?
Yes, very true so.
Okay.
Good. Thank you, Ben. Do you have any other question? No. Alright, let me continue. Where, you know, when you do commit to a long-term relationship, you have to continuously strive to become a better person. And unlike human babies, dogs are dependent on you for their whole lives. And despite being classified as blood hounds, beagles are the gentlest and most peaceful dogs. They're the best teachers for learning kindness, patience, compassion, kindness, and honesty, and independence, and also learning to receive and give love. Let me introduce them to you. Okay, Akira is the smallest one. He's this one with the black, with the one with the tail, the little tail. He's a very caring and gentle and love to clean his siblings' eyes and mouth. That's how he nurtures. Is there anybody with a question there? Okay, I think I can continue. Although food is everything, and I mean everything for Akira, he is never greedy. I give them popcorn treats. I know Reno also love popcorns, which I would throw in the air and they have to catch it with their mouth. If the other caught the one he chased, no big deal for Akira. He would just focus on the next row. And he's always the first to greet me with wagging tails when I wake up and the last to see me before I go to sleep. He made me feel very loved and cared for. Do you guys agree, those who have dogs? Alright, so the next one is Gojira. In this picture, he's the one on the ground. The big one, he's the alpha. To him, I am the most important thing in his life. He always stays close to me. He explores, sniff a bit of grass, but he would never stay far. He always knows where to find me. I feel his deep love for me. One day, he chewed my favorite shoes. I got them in India, so they were irreplaceable. Ladies, shoe lovers, I'm sure you could imagine how pissed I was. So I beat him hard. And right after, he looked me with very sad eyes as he convulse and shook in fear. Then retreated to a corner with his head down, tail tucked between his legs, defeated. His pain and sadness was so palpable. I felt it deep in my bones. Hmm, you don't think so, Reno?
I miss your popcorns. I mean, somebody, can we please cook a popcorn? Because I think rather than just saying it, I mean, we can, we can have popcorn together here, right?
Yeah, I agree with you. And I would like to invite you for a popcorn party one day. Thank you.
Can we do it now, like a free to popcorn?
Yes, any popcorn, powder popcorn butter. And thank you for suggesting that. We can make that a party forever. Thank you, Reno. So let me continue with this because this is like a very important moment for me. When, um, so let me just repeat that, right? I told you that he chewed my shoes and I just got so mad and I beat him. And that was very, very sad. And every time I think about it, I could still feel that pain, his pain and my pain. And also the pain of you losing your favorite shoes. Hmm, yeah. Yeah, but, but it's not as much pain as, as what I felt his pain. Thank you, Natalie. That was an important point. Yes, there was some pain about my shoes that I, that was caused me to be angry. So in short, I never hit him again. I learned that for whatever reason, I can never justify anger to abuse dogs or people. Goji made me understand what kindness and unconditional love really means. Yes, Mr. Mathur?
I have a story about my dog, you know? Yeah, I, I get very attached to them too, you know? I had a dog called Kiki, passed away also. And I can just understand your emotional attachment because I feel it too. You know, I remember the day like it was yesterday. It was such a beautiful morning, you know? Kiki was all happy and then chasing the butterflies and eating the food. And then, then the motorbike came and just Kiki was gone. I, I don't know what to, to say, you know? Sometimes in life, it's like, what? How can I live if Kiki is gone? Kiki is gone.
Yeah.
Kiki, do you love me? Are you hiding?
I totally get your pain. So you know, you know, we, we, we know what that means, right? So um, and yeah, maybe later we can talk more about our dogs, right?
Yeah. How about cat person, right? Not all people like dogs, obviously. Some people do like cats more. And how do you deal with that? Some people doesn't even care about dog.
Yeah, well, you know, Reno, I, I can imagine all people who love cats, they probably also have some pain like I do, right? So thank you. So Goji made me understand what kindness and unconditional love really mean. And the last one, Aya, the only girl. She always makes me smile. Being neutered and brought up with boys, she thinks she is. Being neutered and brought up with boys, she thinks she is one of the boys. She pees like a boy with one hind leg up and she liked to hump the boys. They don't like it. But what stands out for Aya is that she is inquisitive and intrepid. We live near a ridge flanked by deep gorges and lush ravines that Aya loved to explore. Sometimes she's gone for a long time and once she was gone for almost three hours. I called her repeatedly, Aya, Aya, like that, but she wouldn't show up. My friend Lo, a fellow dog owner who was with me said, Miranda, you should punish her when she comes back so she knows who the boss is. But I can't do that because I know how much freedom means to Aya. Once she almost died from a deadly virus and what finally cured her was our daily ridge walk, which always put a sparkle back in her eyes. From Aya, I learned that giving others freedom to do what they love is the best gift I could give them. My, they give them so much love and joy.
Sorry Toastmaster Miranda, sorry. I think you too much, uh, lost your time too much just only for your dog. How about your relationship between you and your fan and your family? Because I don't know, I really don't like to hear your story. You only, what, what's your time just only for your dog?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, the Toastmasters Christie. That is a very good concern and I'm glad you bring that up. And I would love to talk to you about other things, but now, um, this is my time. So I'm going to talk about this, um, dog and because they mean a lot to me. So imagine if you also have something that means a lot to you, you probably want to talk about it. So we'll talk about it later, alright? So my beagles, they give me so much love and joy. And do you know? I almost returned the dogs when I first brought home thinking, am I crazy or what? Mothering dogs at fifty-two, body training them and being responsible for them for what, their whole life, twelve to fifteen years? But for the Toastmasters and friends, I'm so glad I didn't return them. My dogs are the best life coaches. They taught me patience, kindness and unconditional love. They're happy, affectionate, funny, just a delight to be around. They must have a good mother. I may not be the best, I may not get the best mother award for mothering my, my son Govinda. But I got a second chance to become a good mother to Aya, Akira and Goji. Some people would say that I am the mother of all Toastmasters in Bali. I like that. That's much better than the award. Don't you think so? Back to you, Toastmaster of the meeting Reno.
Yeah, yeah. Alright, so how do you feel when you got your speech disrupted like that?
Uh, well, because I'm a little bit prepared that I know that I would be disrupted. I think I was, okay, bring it on. But I, I thought you were not supposed to do it twice.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's fun. It was like, okay.
I mean, I'm planning to bring like an argument between dogs and cats so we can have like a really long conversation here.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, but anyways, this, I think we, we can do it even better, but yeah, it's, it's really nice on how you handle this, this disruption. And yeah, thank you so much sharing to us your love to your three, your, your two sons and one daughter.
Yeah, well, thank you. Thank you Reno.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm, I'm glad to have this chat. Really fun.
So that concludes all of our prepared speaker for tonight. And before we move on, I'd like to call our timers, Ayu Anantia, to give us timers' report and the eligibility. Please, Ayu.
Everybody is eligible. They are all speak in time, in their time allocation. Back to you. Toastmaster of the day.
Ah, alright, yes, super simple. Everything is written down. So, yep. All four of our prepared speaker are eligible to be voted and later on, at before the end of the meeting, the voting will show up and we can vote together. Alright. First session completed. Now we're moving on to the second session, which is the most fun. This session that everybody loves. And this session is Table Topics. Please explain to you what is Table Topics and how it goes. We are going to have someone who's going to lead all of us in this session. And it's definitely not me, but we call it Table Topic Master or TTM. And our TTM tonight is joining us, Magical Valley member from two thousand kilometers away from the city of Madan. Please welcome Sani Chirani.
Thank you Toastmaster Reno. Good evening ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Table Topic Session. Hope you're doing well. Okay, let me share my screen. Before the start. Okay. Can you guys see my screen now? Can you guys see my screen now? Please help me, give me a sign please.
Yes, 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 yes.
Okay. For a moment like this, some people wait their lifetime. For a moment like this, some people search forever. Wanted one special piece, oh, I can't believe it's happening to me. Some people wait their lifetime for a moment like this. So this song, ladies and gentlemen, represents the moment of my dancing journey in the past. It was from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand fourteen, I started my dancing journey by learning the basics of Chinese dance, which was so fun, but also so hard and painful. And because I am a Chinese-born, I'm a Chinese Indonesian-born, ladies and gentlemen, I also assigned to expertise the Indonesian folk dance. And to learn those dances, it always end me with something door and bruises on my body. But all of those pains brought me to see a wonderful things, to see the world. And I had chances to travel for, to travel to some countries to share and also to share the stages with this, with the other arts ambassador from all around the world. So this picture, ladies and gentlemen, was taken in two thousand twelve in Guangzhou, China. Ladies and gentlemen, I seize the moment. I seize that moment. And you have to know that I seize that fifteen years of my dancing journey to dig and also to develop the talent in time. And in this wonderful evening, ladies and gentlemen, I would like, I am inquisitive to hear all of the participants, all of the guests and also the fellow Toastmasters. Are you ready? Okay, before we go ahead, let me welcome our timer today, Ayu, to explain once again about the time regulation. Please let us welcome Ayu Anantia.
Hi everyone, TTM time. For our on-demand topic in Toastmaster, everybody has time two minutes, one, one thirty and two. The background color will be green, yellow and red. So if you go over time, after two minutes and thirty seconds, I will give you. Okay, back to Topic Master.
Wow, wonderful, wonderful Ayu. Okay. And once more, one more announcement is, I would like to welcome Funny, Toastmasters Funny, all the way from Kuching, Malaysia as our Table Topic evaluator tonight. Thank you Funny for joining us.
Thank you Sani.
Yeah, welcome Funny. Okay, um, hey everyone. Can I have a hand? Who's gonna volunteer for the Table Topic speaker or I just choose for my own? Okay, I see hands. I see Robin, I see Herman, I see Sonia. Okay, so far only you two. Natalie, you too?
No, no, I mean, you can start with three and then everyone can speak, you know, can write in the chat so you can save time.
Okay. Okay, let me choose the first speaker. I think I will choose all the way from Mauritius. Toastmaster Robin.
Alright, bring it on.
I will share my screen. You're ready? Timer, you ready?
Yes.
Alright. Okay. Okay, Robin, this is the question for you. If not you, then who? If not now, then when? One to two minutes, Robin, the stage is yours.
If not you, then who? If not now, then when? Well, that's a very good code. And you see, if it's, then if I need to apply to myself, then I ask myself, if it's not me, then who will do it? Let me start with that first. I realized that in my club, that we started this thing online about having meetings. And we are probably the first, yeah, we are probably the first club having started the online meeting in Mauritius. And nobody did it before. Nobody knew how to do it. And during this pandemic, I have to start something. I have to look at something and I was down. I believe a lot of you have been down as well. So I've picked up the challenge and did it anyway. And today, we, we start to do a lot of online meetings and now I believe that a lot of you also can do it. So if it's not you, then who? And if it's not now, then when? So you need to know when you need to pick it up. Do you want to pick it up now or do you want to pick it later? And if you want to pick it later, then it might be too late. So if you are the person to do it, do it now. Because you might be the one who makes the change and you might be the one to make a dream into a reality. So thank you very much. Back to you Table Topic Master.
Wow, 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 yeah, that's, that answer is, is based on reality and it's inspiring, Robin. Thank you so much. Okay. The second speaker, I will choose that one, this one was Sonia and Herman. Okay. Uh, now is Sonia, is here, is still here?
Already left.
Oh, okay. Okay, now how about Herman? Okay, are you ready? Okay, hold on, I will share my screen. This time the timer Herman. Okay, can you see my screen now?
Yes.
The question is, do you wait for the perfect moment to happen in your life or you don't? Do you wait for the perfect moment to happen in your life or you don't? One to two minutes, Herman, the stage is yours.
Thank you. Good evening Toastmasters. When I saw the theme of today, I thought back to one of my favorite films. And it was Dead Poets Society with Robin Williams. One of the things he said in that movie over and over and over was Carpe Diem, seize the day. And one of the things I realized in life is there is a quote that says, "Practice makes perfect." Unfortunately, practice makes permanent. Because if you practice bad habits, they become permanent bad habits. If you practice good habits, they then become great habits. One of the things I've realized in my life is that our clock and the world's clock never agree. We have goals, we have dreams, we have hopes for our future. But any day, every day, our clock can end. And so you can't wait for the perfect moment. Perfect doesn't exist. You can only be as prepared as possible to make the moment as perfect as possible. So be inquisitive, be curious, be ever enthusiastic, be the enthusiastic student of life. Take the chance, seize the day and make your own permanent moment and your own perfect moment. Thank you Toastmaster.
Wow, practice makes permanent. Yeah, yeah. Another PMP that I like one. Practice makes progress. Wonderful Herman. Okay, let's go to the third question. Uh, the volunteer was, uh, for the volunteer is, um, Christie. Is that right? Are you ready Christie? Okay. Okay, let me share my screen. Please time the timer, Christie. Can you see the questions? You see?
Yes, I see.
Oh, can you get the same moment twice in your life? Or, yeah, I can, I can twist to another question. Have you ever get the same moment twice in your life? One to two minutes from now, the stage is yours.
I think, uh, all of us, impossible to get the same moment at the first we got it. Why? Because, uh, life must go on, the situation will different. And this situation help, uh, should help us to take a chance if we get, because the life must go on. And we will not get the same chance or the same moment. Uh, and it will, uh, and I think it's not good for us. I have an experience about this, guys. I already got a job. Uh, the organization allow me to join with them, but at that time, I don't take it. I don't, I didn't take, take it. Because what? Because I have another dream about another organization. So I don't take it. But now I'm very sad because I think I'm wrong. Why I didn't take it, that chance? So I think guys, if you get a moment, a chance right now, please take it because we don't know, we will not get the same chance or we don't get the same moment. So move on and take a chance right now. Over to you Toastmaster, um, Sani.
Yeah, wonderful Christie. Yeah, I agree with you that, well, we never know that we will got a chance twice for the same thing, same opportunity. Yes, I agree with you. Just that I shared to you my dancing journey, I think I never get, I never get it again. Well done Christie. Okay, we go to the fourth speaker. We have someone named Hikma. Are you there? Are you there?
Yes, I am, but I don't think I've put my name forward.
Uh-huh. Okay, so are you ready?
No, I'm not participating today. I'm a guest.
Oh, okay, welcome, welcome. Oh, so, uh, are you willing to take the chance? Or I have to another person?
Not today, I'm just watching and observing.
Alright, alright, it's alright, no worries. Okay, I will move to another volunteer. Toastmaster Matur. Are you ready? Okay. Please time the timer. Okay, I will share my screen. Okay, Toastmaster Matur. Be happy for this moment. This moment is your life. Toastmaster Matur, be happy for this moment. This moment is your life. One to two minutes, the stage is yours.
Uh, good evening Table Topic Master, fellow Toastmasters and guests. The message is very clear, be happy. This moment you're not gonna get back. Enjoy every bit of this moment. Let's be quite inquisitive of what is gonna happen to us. We never know, life is full of uncertainty. And that uncertainty is that, is, is something which uh, keeps us guessing. The secrecy that is hidden in life is the most amazing thing. And if you can get rid of that secrecy, if you can solve that secrecy, if you can get answer for those secrecy, life be- becomes very defining moments. Those defining moments are the most precious moments. They are the most happy moments and it's worth enjoying. Life is always there. It's our choice as to whether we are gonna enjoy or whether gonna live a very dull moment. The dull moment, people normally say that life is flat, life is easy, like that. But if you can convert that dull moment into a happy moment, that's our choice. And how we make it is again in our hands. People say that life is ten percent uncertainty and ninety percent, it's in your hands. It's how you handle those kind of uncertainties. I would prefer to be happy, enjoy each moment and remain in the moment always and be happy forever. Over to you Table Topic Master.
Wow. Good message for us. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I think we have reached the time. And yeah, sadly, I have to say that I have to end this wonderful session. Yep, and today, and this moment, I also see this moment because this is my first time of being a Table Topic Master in Magical Bali, Bali. Okay, I really enjoyed and thank you very much for participating. Uh, Table Topic Speaker, Robin, Herman, Matur and Christie. And next, I will give this virtual back to our gorgeous host, Toastmasters Reno Raphael.
Thank you so much Sunny for hosting this wonderful Table Topic session and you did really well, classroom. And yeah, hopefully you all, especially all four of you who take the chance to speak and you all enjoy... You enjoy the opportunity that was given to you. And before we move on, I would like to call back our timers to give timers report and tell us who is eligible.
Everybody eligible, Mr. Toastmaster of the day. Thank you very much.
Alright, there's a very quick timer support. And as you can see on the chat box, the time details. And yeah, everybody is eligible. And it will be for the, before the end of the meeting. And since this already like an hour and a half session, it's not really a long one. Maybe it's good for us to have a break. So we're going to have a break, going to have an intermission for five minutes. And the time will start now. Alright, five minutes counting.
I am counting. So now we can talk?
Yeah, I want to talk.
Sunny, you can leave the session.
You know, I, I was arranged, I was prepared for the opening. Uh, how I'm gonna to say this? I wanna put a picture of my, uh, of my seizing moment. So I, so there was a sound that crossing my mind. Natalie, I know you can sing too.
You can do a duet with Ajay. Yeah, you're a very good singer.
And Ben as well.
You guys can sing.
Everybody can sing, like I have share.
Oh my god.
Oh, okay, so we'll do the bell dance.
This is nice, a small meeting.
By the way, by the way Sunny, congratulations on being first time Table Topic Master. You did a great job. And I need Table Topic Master for Table Topic Tuesday on October, right? I'll put your name, yes.
Yes. She is fallen toe.
Sunny, I'm quite shocked, actually this is your first time, really?
Uh, first time in Magical, but the second time for my entire Toastmaster journey.
Wow.
Definitely need to do it again, really.
More.
Alright.
Next time is Tom and then G.
Yeah, next time is Tom, next, and next G.
This is going to be our Tom in the next meeting.
Wow.
We will have a joint meeting with Titanium.
First time, also. I love how people here are genuinely push each other. You know popcorn?
I want man, man, I want.
Oh, that's unfair.
Man, man Miranda, I miss, I miss popcorn as I miss the theater.
Oh, you're, you're mad dad, sorry.
I mean, no, I mean, I mean, I miss the popcorn as I miss the theater. I like to go to theaters, watching movies.
Yeah, so come back. Come back to Bali.
Well, I need the microwave rather than the popcorn, so give me a microwave, so I have a lot of popcorn.
If you guys wanna...
I see you Melita.
I use microwave, I use a pan. And then just put a little bit of oil and, and then just, um, close it. Then it's gonna pop. I never use microwave. You, you want to hear a story about microwave in my house?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes.
I live with my mom and my aunt. And we, all, all of us have different personalities. My aunt is very carefree and very, you know, free flowing. So she was pretty ignorant to the, you know. She opened microwave, put the food in, press the button, click, open the microwave, take out the food out, right? Every time she does it, she did it like that. Now, one day, when my mom used the microwave after her, she opened the micro, my mom opened the microwave and she saw a gecko grilled to death. This is real, people, I'm not even making this up. It was gecko and then my mom was screaming, "Oh, what is that?" And after that, she took like a paper towel and cleaned the whole microwave. A gecko, Robin, um, like a small lizard.
It's not small, it's big.
It's not small. Yeah, well, like, like this size, because it can slip into the mic. No one knows when the gecko got into the microwave. And my aunt apparently didn't no, didn't notice anything, went to put the food in. So I'm like, okay, I'll, I'll...
Well, maybe the gecko wan- wa- wanted some pen, you know?
Thirty seconds to go.
That gecko, um... Flash, gecko meat can be like an alternative food solution. But I don't think that's what seemed meant by food, you know, by grilling the gecko to death. So that way, it would really have taken my house.
Okay, I see one. Now, already time.
The police come, the police come. Police come.
Ready, five minutes, so three one please. Are you ready? So before that, I will call our Tom, Reno Raphael. Please applause for Reno Raphael.
Alright, the meeting is officially starting again. Now it's time for you to open a video. Every single one of you, please open a video. We're going to take a good picture. Before we start, every single one of you.
Where is Raisa and Yulianni?
Yeah. Raisa, Yulianni.
Yulianni is still in China, let's call her.
Yeah, still another two people.
Ajay.
Wait, wait, wait. Yeah, Raisa is coming and then Yulianni. Wait a second, how about Yulianni, so we wait for her?
Ajay fashion, Ajay fashion.
Fashion, fashion, alright. Hey, check out Miranda. Do it again Miranda, do it again.
Do it again.
Woof, 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 me too, me too.
Here.
Take time, take time.
Hey, let's just, uh, take the picture and then move on, right?
Yeah, we, we can put Yulianni later on. Alright, I think Sunny is going to take a picture, right? Alright, okay, you got, you got the command now.
Okay, everyone, please, uh, ready? One, two, and three. Wait. So now, please three file. I will take, I will start it with, uh, one, two, three. Okay, thank you everyone.
Thank you, you're so quiet.
Thank you Sunny.
Alright, now it's the time for the evaluation session. And we are going to call our general evaluator to lead us all. So please welcome back the general Ben, we took...
Uh, I was a sergeant, not a general. But yes, general evaluator for this evening. Very good. So, well done with the first couple sessions. Now we're on the last, uh, last leg of this meeting. So, let's get it going here. Our first evaluator of the evening is her first, uh, second time doing an evaluation, I believe. And I think she'll be just fine. She's gonna do a lot of great things. Let's introduce our first evaluator of evening, Toastmaster Lita.
Yulianni, congratulations on completing your speech project of evaluations and feedback for the first speech. Your story was captivating me and you attract me more to your story. I like the way you start your speech with a quote. And also explain it in, uh, explain it in English because you mentioned the quote in Bahasa to accommodate our guests and members who are non-Bahasa speaker. Good job. Also, you added conversations to your story that made me more inquisitive to your story. And then, uh, finally, you're using props. I love when speaker use props. So it adds, uh, the speech more lively. And you're using, uh, pictures of Panda and then the Great Wall of China to support your dreams that you really, really want to go to China. Now, here's the things that you can do better at your next speech. Instead of using quote, you probably want to use equations. For example, how do you feel when you finally accomplish your dream? And you may also appoint someone to answer your questions. That's a really good start to enlightening the audience to attract more to your, to your speech. And then next, I would like to see more expressions. For examples, like you adding conversations. You probably won't do like a two people conversations. If I told them someone asking you or told you to go to the finance one, then you probably would like to say, "Hey, Yulianni, I guess you better go to the finance one." "Really? Okay, I'm gonna try that." That's really cool. And then explain any non-universal term. For example, campaign. So we are here, universal people here, we do not know what is campaign. For some people who are not from China, they do not know what is campaign. So it's better for you to explain a bit so people did not get lost at some part of your speech. Overall, good speech, great job. So you good at using quote as the opening of your speech. And you added conversations and also you use props. You do better, you will do better to your next speech if you are using questions instead of quote and more lively expressions. Then last but not least, explain any non-universal terms. That's it from me. Back to G.
Whoa, good job, Lita. It's like your valuation was just spot on. And I'll tell you more about that later, but well done. Probably a good idea talking to your mentor. Not gonna mention who that is, by the way. Okay, anyways, enough humble bragging there. Our next evaluator is gonna be evaluating Toastmaster Raisa. She, you could consider her Miss Worldwide. She's been to probably, I don't know how many countries in the last week. I don't know how she's doing it in quarantine, but gaining a lot of knowledge that she already has. Let's introduce our distinguished Toastmaster, Toastmaster Natalie Chigah. I cannot say, sir, Ja Hadi. I'm gonna get it one day. Keep on practicing.
Hang on Ben, yep. Alright. Raisa, I would like to congratulate you for accomplishing your project objectives. I noticed that it was an informational speech and you did your homework. I would like to share with you, um, what I thought effective communication means. Effective communication means that your message can be accepted by the audience with the same understanding, just like how you want them to understand. And I think you did that wo- uh, pretty well, uh, tonight. There are three things that I like from your speech. The first one is the logos or the well researched and well prepared side of your speech. You, uh, combine the publication, journal and article and each of the research that you did, also supporting your point, which is the main purpose of this project. The second one, which I think is your, one of your biggest strengths, is you speak passionately. And your vocal variety naturally flows. I noticed you had a good pacing, a good volume, variety, and also a good pitch. Well, to start with. And the third thing that I, uh, liked from your speech was that you, in this new normal environment of online meeting in Zoom, you managed to have a good eye contact and you give smile to the audience. And that keep us engaged throughout the presentation. So well done on that. I thought, how to make this informational speech to the next level? In the closing, you're mentioning some, some moments to ask the audience to reflect. And I think that to make this speech into the next level, you want to be more persuasive. So I will recommend you three things to make this speech even more persuasive. The first one is the pathos, or how to put your audience into a certain frame of mind. Then you can do this in several ways. First, using personal stories, second, clarifying your message, or third, share something that can build emotional connection with the audience. In this sense, I would recommend you to clarify your message. Ask yourself when you're writing the speech, what's in it for the audience? What's in it for us to remember? And you can reinforce that at the end, because the conclusion needs to be explicit. So it's also stuck in the audience's mind, because that's the last thing they will remember. Then the second thing that I would like to suggest you is to spice up your intro. You said, "Oh, it seemed impossible until you tried," and then it's possible. You can actually act out. Act out like you didn't know English. So for example, "Reza, do you understand?" Uh, 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 y- yes, yes, sir. Something like that. Make a joke out of it. Hmm, make it quick, but make, make it fun, and I know you can do it. And the third thing that I would like to suggest is gestures in new normal. So I noticed you used quite a lot of gestures that can engage the audience, but some of the gestures were out of screen or below here. So, you know, this is the PowerPoint for the new normal gestures. Overall, it was informational speech. I believe it can be more persuasive if you apply clarifying the message, uh, spicing up the introduction, and gestures in new normal. Back to you, G.
Excellent job, very thorough as well, as always. Well done. Okay, our next evaluator, our third evaluator, she is all the way in Lobuk. And you can consider her a legal drug dealer or pharmacist. So you can have a prescription and she can legally deal you drugs. She's gonna be evaluating Denny, Toastmaster Denny. So let's bring a round of applause for Toastmaster Amelia Ratnatta.
Thank you so much, Ben, for the introduction. First, I would like to congrat, congratulate Denny for completing his Level 1 Project 3. Well, I like three things from your speech. First is, when you do the opening, when you do the opening, you give us a question. When will the best time to invest? So, we have, so you grow our, our curiosity with that question. And also, it's very interesting with that opening. Second one, I also love your body language. Even though we are now online, you use body language, you sing this, which is, which one is DCA, which one is LSI? You use that. And also, the third one is when you presented with the PowerPoint presentation. I really love it also, because you use big image, no, only written or letter that um looks like a newspaper, newspaper PowerPoint, but you give it the image at the presentation, and it make us easier to understand. And also, you don't forget to cite where do you get the information. And even talk at the last, you give the bibliography. And I think there are a couple things that could improve in your speech. The first one is, uh, when you show us the presentation with the graph, you explain the graph one by one, and it a bit wasting the time. Actually, we want to hear more about your speech, because it's really, really interesting. You could give the big conclusion about the graph, for example. For the three graph, we could see that all the three country use LSI technique for investment, something like that. Then you explain to one by one. And that's the first suggestion. And the second is, I really like the opening. So I want the, I want that the closure is also strong. You open with, "When will the best time to invest?" You could say, "Ladies and gentlemen, this is best time to invest. So lump all your money to do the investment." Okay, I think that's the subject, the suggestion for me. But I believe that because of this interesting topic, all of us actually want to hear more from you. Okay, cannot wait again to hear your speech. Thank you so much, Danny.
Okay, awesome evaluation as well, spot on Amelia. And just when you thought you had enough of one Amelia, we have two Amelias. And this Amelia, she is coming from us, from Hand Toastmasters Club. And she loves to teach, likes to teach, gets paid to teach, and teaching is her passion. So you can say that she's gonna teach us a few things about uh her evaluation of Toastmaster Miranda. Let's welcome Toastmaster Amelia Febriani.
As a public speaker, we will always meet different types of audience. And sometimes they are not nice, like what we have in Toastmasters Club. Sometimes they took the attentions of the audience by being funny or sharing their personal story, or even shouting directly with a harsh and negative comment. But that's the idea of being professional speaker. It doesn't mean that you can craft a beautiful words, but how you can be effective communication with the types of audience. So congratulation, DTM Miranda, because for me, you has demonstrated the skill of managing difficult audience with well. So three things that I like from your presentations is first, you open with a clear expectation or what we usually call a housekeeping rules for your session. So you clearly say that you, everyone can take note of a question, that we can address the questions at the end of the session. Uh, please keep up, keep out your cellphone and anything, which is very important to, to say or to put, especially if you are outside the Toastmasters Club. So if you have a stage outside Toastmaster, I think it's really something that we need to do, it's to clarify our expectation. Second, you also address the interrupter or the disruptor with a good manner. You're not embarrassing them, but you state, you address, you even mention their name, which is very good. And at the end, you also thanking them, which is, it makes the audience feel or get your attention well. And the third thing that I like, you also maintain your professional postures by being calm. And also keep your friendly and smile and your expression. So it, it clearly seem that you are ready for this kind of disruptions. So probably I can suggest two things to improve. The first, uh, what you can do is by build a bridge to bring the audience back to your speech. Because sometimes after interruption, especially with it, if the interrupter is a talker that's sharing their long story, we need a bridge to come back again to what is the line of your speech. So build a bridge to come back, probably by repeating a bit apart before the interruptions, before you continue with the new one. The second thing that you can do also, it's especially for negative, negative comment or input, instead of directly thanking them, you can like listen to them first, rephrase, and probably also give your comment on it and thanking them at the end. So it feels, uh, so your, your thank you feel more sincere for them. For examples, like you can, "Oh, so that's what you think? Hmm, I never thought it that way." Yeah, uh, for me, it's actually dog is quite important, because I learned a lot of thing. But yes, thank you anyway, you make me remember my family again. So in conclusion, three things that you did well, clear expectation, address without embarrassing, and maintain the professional postures. Two things that you can improve, build the bridge to come back to your speech line, and also address the negative comment, especially by saying thank you in the end. Back to G.
Awesome, good job, very thorough as well. Real quick, let's get a timers reports. Toastmaster IU.
Well, I can say everybody is eligible. I just want to make sure everybody that after this is general evaluation report, you all have four minutes unless Ben have five minutes. Thank you, back to you, G.
Awesome. So real quick, we're gonna get it to our ballot counter. It's gonna post up our uh, uh, what is it called? Oh yes, our ballots to see who wins. So real quick, we're gonna go to Toastmaster Ping. Do you have the ballot counter?
Yes, I have it right now. So you have two minutes uh to cast your vote, okay? Be democratic, everybody has to vote, okay? So we start right now. Back to you.
Awesome. Well done. You're gonna hear from me and my team. Did it already disappear, Miranda?
Oh, where is it? I don't get it.
I got it. Who else got it? Can you, can you do it again there, Toastmaster Ping?
How do you do that?
So I have to end poll and restart the poll?
One more time for Toastmaster Miranda.
Okay. Um, no name, I'm in on co-host kind of phone.
Let, let.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
I can just do it personally to Ping.
Okay.
I, I think if you're a co-host, you cannot vote, so that's probably too late.
I'm not a co-host. Okay, well, maybe I was, I didn't know.
All good. So before I come back and give my, have my team, we're gonna do our table talk, table topic evaluation. And we had someone step up to the plate and take charge, uh, I believe, Toastmaster Booney?
Thanks.
Alright.
So to, congratulations to all four table topic challengers. I have stand back at the backstage to observe and listen very carefully to four of you. And here is my report for our number, the first speaker, Robin. I thought he has a very relatable, he related to a very real life story of Toastmaster. Very situational story, and I thought it was smoothly carried out for his two minutes with opening of a questions on a body with Toastmaster situations and close it with a call of action. I do feel that for the entire two minutes, I kind of lose a little bit of attention with the speaker because Robin is looking to decide. I thought you'll be much, much more engaging if Robin could just look directly at the camera. For our second speaker, Mr. Herman. Sir Herman linked personally to his favorite movie, Dead Poet's Society. And I like the way he twists the quote, "Practice make perfect, practice makes permanent." Quite a catchy effect in terms of catching the audience's attention. Now, to inquisitively capture the audience's attention, my challenge for you is to experiment with adesurate the pose. Like a three-second pose, for example. Perfect. Doesn't exist. Our third speaker, Christie. Christie, your strength is that you have such an energetic and powerful voice. I do observe long dreaded ahs and uh. It would be much, much more impactful if you could replace them with pose. So my challenge to you is to be comfortable with poses. Try it and see how, how much the magic it would bring. Our final speaker, Mr. Matur. You have the campaign pitch of your voice, your voice naturally have that campaign pitch. And for a more engaging two minutes, I thought it would be much more interesting if you put in a personal story to link in the happiest moment in your life. I thought that the audience could be emotionally, more emotionally connected to you with your sharing. Back to you.
Fantastic. And again, super thank you for stepping up when we needed someone, and that is what Toastmasters is all about. Feeling, filling up spots when the, when teams need them. Speaking of team, now we get to hear from the rest of our team. So let's bring back our grammarian, the very handsome, big smile, just lovable kind of guy, Toastmaster Krishna.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ben. Now the grammarian report. The word of the day was inquisitive. And I would say a big congratulations to those who used the word of the day. Let's give a shout out to Ping Hendra one time, Lita two time, Natalie one time, Reza one time, Seni one time, Matur one time, and Booney one time. Snap your fingers, congratulations to everybody. Miranda also one time?
Yes, it's a part of my speech.
I was so focused on disturbing you, I think I forgot to, to write it down. And Miranda one time, congratulations to the word of the day, snap your fingers, congratulations. Now, there was some amazing good usage of the language. And how could we not, the table topic master had such inspirational questions, inspirational quotes. But anyway, let's go to the really good usage of the English. I don't know if I'm allowed to say this, but one of the first quotes used was Indonesian. It was "Kajalah ilmu sampai ke China," which is in English, meaning chase knowledge all the way to China. And then there was a quote by Reza. He said, "English, English is a monster, now still a monster, but cute." Danny mentioned one of my all-time favorite quotes in my life. "The best time to invest is twenty years ago. The second best time to invest is now." That's right. I love that hand gesture, good job. And Ben, not sure if it was a quote or a, a nice, um, what's that called, antonym? A legal drug dealer or pharmacist. It's funny, because a drug dealer is illegal and legal is legal. Now, to the improper use of the English language, there was only a few, so congratulations overall. But I'll just mention it just for us to all learn together. Someone mentioned, "Tell my stories." A better way to say it would be, "Share a story." Then, someone said, "Travel to overseas," maybe say, "Travel overseas." After graduated, after graduating. Speakless, speechless. Relation will, a good relation with you all. As an Indonesians, just say, "To Indonesians," or as an Indonesian. Someone mentioned Japan. Japan is the Japanese way of saying Japan in Bahasa, so you wanna say Japan if it's in English. There was a slide that was showing the, the number of English speakers. The words used was proportion fifty-seven percent and bulk eighty percent. Now, a suggestion for that might be to say fifty-seven percent of the market. Or the English language has a fifty-seven percent market ownership. Or you could also say eighty percent of the English language dominates the market. So instead of saying the word proportion or bulk, you might wanna use those kind of words. For the question, now I wasn't sure if this was a movie that was titled this way. The title was, "Do you wait for the perfect moment in life or do not?" Now, if it was just in the English language, my suggestion would be, "Do you or do you not wait for the perfect moment in life?" A suggestion. And last one, the word congratulate was mentioned as conculate. So the correct way to say is congratulate. That is all, thank you very much. It was a pleasure being your grammarian. Back to you, general evaluator, Ben.
Awesome, fantastic. Okay, now we have the more confusing role, the uh counter. So to again, share his findings of how many uhs we had, let's welcome back Toastmaster Ajit.
Alright, thank you, Ben. I'm sure that everybody's, is inquisitive about how well they did. Right, so I'm sharing a screen share here. So the best person who said the most repeated word So the best person who said the most repeated word, unnecessary words, INM. So as you can see, well, Danny got about 25. So during the time he's speaking and Reno say it about 20 and and seven, right? Alright. And INM, Yuliani said about 10 times. And you can see all the others here. Right? Okay, that would be my report for tonight. Go, go back to General Evidator, Ben.
Oh, that was quick. I like that. Excellent. Fantastic, Ajee. Alright. We're gonna wait for the ballot counter after that. So let me get into my report. How much time did you say I had, IU?
Five minutes, sir.
I'm probably going over that, but thank you for reminding me. I'll try to be quick. So the theme of the day was to seize the day. Quotes I wrote down. Don't wait for the perfect moment. Take the moment and make it perfect. Seize the day, right? And we did that this evening, right? So for those of you that don't know, this meeting process with Toast, Magical Bali Toastmasters starts two weeks out. The team is in constant communication with trying to fill roles and find speakers and even find last minute replacements. Fantastic. And this week, in the last two weeks, I've been to probably four or five different clubs throughout the world and I'm still quite, you know, humbled that our club is very good at filling these roles. One thing I would say though, is that the two clubs that I went to in the US, they used our American pushiness and peer pressure kind of way where like after the club meeting's over, whoever is the Tom next week is already asking the members, hey, hey, do this, your turn. If you're a speaker this week, you're an evaluator next week, right? It's, that's again, that's American peer pressure and I like it. So, but it's just a suggestion. To fill the roles right away. So then if something does happen, we have a backup plan. And that's something I really did appreciate when I saw that. Okay. And then of course, not having any roles, we didn't have a scheduled guest reader. But we all stepped in and made our guests feel welcome. Most of those guests are gone now in the beginning, but Toastmaster Matur, you felt welcome? When you came in? Yep, of course. We talked to him, made him feel welcome. The other two, they left. So maybe we didn't do a good enough job. I'm just joking. Also, okay, so our Sergeant at Arms, Toastmaster Denny, another quote I like. Lost time is never found again. By Benjamin Franklin. Denny is the greatest Sergeant at Arms I've ever seen. Sets up and tells us when we're ready to go, start, gives us all of the necessary information about five minutes before we start. So we can start properly in time. So that was very well done. No, don't change anything, Denny. Keep doing exactly that. Okay. And for our role takers today, you guys explained your roles in the beginning very thoroughly. But remember this, right? It's a time when you guys are up here and you guys get a chance to speak. You get a chance to like, that, that might be your only chance to talk the rest of the meeting. So I would challenge anybody who's doing a role to kind of make a speech out of it. Make it fun. Cause be, like all the meetings I go to, uh, it, it's the same thing in every country. It's boring. Grammarian boring, uh counter boring, ballot counter boring. They're all boring. It's explained by the book. Make it fun. It's your time to shine, right? Your time to shine. Right? There are no small parts, only small actors. Right? So use your small time to talk and make it awesome. Now our Tom, Toastmaster Reno, again with his awesome hats. Set the pace of the meeting the best way he can. So you went really smooth and I appreciate everything you've done, Reno. Well done. So our role takers today, Toastmaster Seni, you have an amazing voice. Uh, sorry, Ajee, you are no longer our karaoke king. We have a monarchy and it's just the queen. Toastmasters, any. So what I would challenge you to do next time is our, the more time that we have uh, for table topics, the more speakers we get the chance to hear them speak, which allows our guests to kind of talk. So I would cut short your intro a little bit, so we can have more time to let our guests have a chance to talk. Or more time to peer pressure them to hopefully force them to talk and not have them leave. But well done again. Keep up the energy. Okay, Toastmaster Evidator, Toastmaster Booney. You stepped in again, like I said before, and you gave specific feedbacks that we can all use. And I'll say this a couple of times, when we give evaluations, again, try to talk to the audience because we're, we wanna learn too. And if you're only specifically talking to the speakers, we might not be paying attention. So what your good advice you give us might not actually hit home because we're not paying attention because our name wasn't called or something like that. So try to welcome us all in your evaluation because your, your tips are very useful for all of us. And that's the point of evaluations. Alright, our grammarian, Toastmaster Krishna. Way to pay attention. That, I hate that role grammarian. It doesn't allow me, I do it, to really hear what people are doing. Cause you're listening a lot of times for mistakes and that's, that's not fun to try to find the mistakes in what a lot of good things. But one cool thing on Saturday I did, I found, uh, I was in the Palo New Centura Club. And they're a brand new club, but they had a really cool way of doing their grammarian. They used a PowerPoint slide where they had like an option. It was use this way, use this way, which was correct. So it made it really interactive. Um, now this, the part was, it was, sometimes they're both wrong. But you know, this happens when English isn't someone's first language. But I was there to politely help them, which is, which is what, what's, what's what it's all about, right? Being tactful when you're giving suggestions. But still, the, the ingenuity was really cool. Making grammarian more interactive for everyone, especially when we're online. Okay, but good job there. And our uh counter. Okay, great job. Again, one of those roles, you're gonna sit there and listen to errors. I don't like it, but it's necessary evil. And Ajee, again, I would challenge you the same way. Try to make it more interactive. Giving us a PowerPoint. Most of us here are Toastmasters, I think. But you know, it's again, it's boring, just giving us tally marks. Kind of make it your own kind of a presentation. Find a way, an inventive way to make that a, a good role. And the two American clubs I went to, I didn't, I don't remember them even having it. Man, if they did, it's like very short and it, but I don't know. So otherwise, good job, way to pay attention in very detail. So that was definitely key. Okay, on to the evaluators. Toastmaster Melita, fantastic example for giving improvements. That is always the key to evaluating. You're, you really formatted it very well. So I think like again, uh, we're going to ask your mentor on help on how to format things. I think really paid off in the end. So well done there. And I challenge again, all evaluators in this sense, what we should do as evaluators, right? We shouldn't really be surprised at what speeches. We need to reach out when we find out we're evaluating someone, reach out to them, find out what their purpose is. Not just the objective, but what do they want to look at? Right? And then you can kind of create it where it's like, okay, their, their goal is this. So do they hit that goal? And then you find a couple of things they can work on. Because new speakers, if you give them too much stuff to work on, they're gonna be overwhelmed and discouraged. So you could find one or two things that they really need to work on. And then bring it in and hopefully they can start seeing in themselves what they can improve. Alright, uh, Toastmaster, distinguished Toastmaster Natalie. You're always focused and accurate with sharing the purpose of the project. Of course, using powers of three with really good specific examples. And again, I would challenge you as well, uh, not just to talk to the speaker, but talk to all of us. Because what you have to say is really important because you, you, you focus so well and pay attention so well to the speech that even me, when I have like this crazy AD, even being a general evaluator, I start floating off in the space. Because you're talking to someone else and I'm not part of the conversation. So try to bring us all into the conversation when you're given helpful tips. But well done. And our first Amelia, the legal drug dealer. You used powers of three as well. Right? So that was very good and you specific details. In the beginning, I would suggest reminding what the purpose was. Um, cause sometimes when we, when we hear a speech and we have all these different sections, we forget sometimes. Because there's a lot going on. So remind us what the purpose of the speech was. And then did they hit that? Did they do it? And then we can, oh yeah, yeah, that was good. That's, I remember that part. Other than that, very good job. And our second Amelia, another one that kind of seized the day today and uh, had a, a great evaluation. You, you, you made your evaluation much more of a speech, right? Your introduction kind of presented it and you took your time and, and had a very good organization and very good helpful hints. Cause even Miranda being a distinguished Toastmaster, sometimes you get uh, discouraged and they don't think like, if someone is a better speaker than us, we get really scared that we can't give someone advice. So you had really great advice, um, that was really useful. And again, same thing with Natalie. Don't just talk to the speaker, because your advice is very powerful. Uh, so talk to all of us so we were focused in. But great job, other than that. Okay, final thoughts. I'm almost done, guys. Tell me and I forget. Teach me and I may remember. Involve me and I learn. Again, Benjamin Franklin. And we have the golden opportunity right now to travel the world and hear new voices. And a lot of us in this club and, and pub in Bali, we, we've taken that time to kind of go abroad. And have, and hear these different, uh, hear these different voices, see these different clubs, see the similarities and try to bring certain things in. And when we get out of our comfort zone, um, that, it, it makes us grow in a, in a crazy way. Because we know we can, we can hear people speaking where their, or English is their first language. And we can go to America or England or Australia and hear these people speak. And it boosts our confidence. Cause even me, like, I joined Toastmasters here. And I've spoken here and I'm very comfortable with you guys. But going to like America where I'm from, but I haven't been there in three years and talking to complete strangers. It's, it's a nerve wracking thing. But we have to be able to get out of our comfort zone and realize that Toastmasters International is exactly that. It's international. It's just, we have this opportunity to go and learn and take something, um, from other clubs, which is super important right now. And a couple of things. Um, another quote I, I found about that. Yesterday I was clever, so I wanted to change the world. Today I'm wise, so I'm changing myself. And anybody know who said that? Roomy, roomy.
That's Chinese, no?
It's roomy, it's roomy.
I was gonna say Ben said that, but okay.
Yeah, good call. But yeah, it's, it's roomy, right? So, uh, what I observed, this is the last thing I'll say. I observed a couple of new roles i- in a couple of these other clubs. And one of them, or two of them I really like. And to start off a meeting, they have a joke teller. It's like a daily joke. And a lot of times they're dad jokes and they're boring. But no matter what, it's like an icebreaker for the meeting. And I think that that will be kind of something we can use. But the, the most, uh, useful, uh, role I've seen was really clever. It's called a, a listener role.
Yeah, I love that.
It's not an interrupter role, but thank you for chiming in. Just kidding, Miranda.
I love it.
Yes. Yeah, I know. And Miranda was able to see that yesterday. A listener role. Someone who's designated to listen at the very end of the meeting, they kind of give us all a quiz about the speakers and some fun facts. And it's a way that we can all improve our active listening. Because again, speaking is what we're trying to do, but you know, we, we, when we talk, we're only repeating what we know. When we are quiet and we're listening, we're learning. And I think that's an awesome role that we can probably try to in, intertwine in our meeting sometime. But anyways, uh, I really like how this club is not afraid to kind of go abroad and introduce yourself to new people. And again, I'm really happy to be a part of it. And I welcome all the guests that came. I hope you guys had a good time and that's it. That's my, uh, my evaluation. So let's give it back to our Tom, Toastmaster Reno. Is that five minutes, by the way?
More.
It was five minutes.
But it's good. All good, Ben.
Yeah, it's a really long evaluation session. Like we have four evaluators, we have TTE, we have grammarian account and of course Ben giving us the general evaluation at the end. Which is all of you really do it comprehensively. Doesn't have to be long or short, but as long as you've got all of the details that you're going to tell, it's amazing. And you all are doing a great job. And it's time for us now to seize the moment, especially to seize the winner, who is going to seize their work. And to do that, we're going to move to the Hall of Fame, the Hall of Fame session. And I would like to call our ballot counter, Ping Hendra, to announce the winner.
Alright, are you guys ready? Are you guys inquisitive enough to find out who's the winner? Okay, today. So, uh, can we have someone to share the screen, please? Denny, please, would you mind? Seni, would you mind sharing the screen, please?
I don't think Stan is here.
Oh no.
Danny's here. Or Seni's not, no, she's not.
Seni, yeah.
Danny's not, yeah. Well, so, uh, sorry about that. Okay. So anyway, the best table topic speaker goes to Herman Witeker. So I will do a toast for you. Congratulations. I will drink it. And now we go on to the best evaluator of the night. Are you guys ready? And the best evaluator is Amelia Fabriani. Yay, I will toast for you. Congratulations. And I will drink it. And the moment of truth, your favorite speaker of the night. Who do you guys think it is? Who do you guys think is the winner? Your favorite speaker of the night with over overwhelming. The winner is, look at that smile. Miranda, congratulations, my mentor. It's for you and I'll drink.
Thank you.
Congratulations and good job, everybody. Good job to, um, all of you here. Back to you again.
Thank you so much, ballot counter for announcing the winners. And now to now we got the three winners. But remember, since it is all about seize the moment, seizing the moment. We are all the winner. And we seize every single moment that was given to us. And we did, all of us did really well. And that's pretty much conclude my role as the Toastmaster of the meeting. And really thank you. So I really like to say thank you for all of you. And the opportunity for given to me to be able to host this meeting and working together with all of the roll takers, all the amazing team and also all of the guests. Uh, but before that, I will give, but we are not ending the meeting yet. And I would like to give this stage back to our acting president to close the meeting. Tom, our batteraji.
Alright, thank you, Reno. And this is it. Our, this, our meeting has come to an end. And I would like to hear some feedback from guests. But before, if you have some announcement, you can put it on the chat box, please. Okay, so first I would like to hear from Gede Upek Apriadi. Can you unmute yourself and then give, give us some feedback about this meeting?
Yeah, hi. Uh, good evening, batteraji. Thank you for the time given to me. Um, very nice, uh, great meeting. I would love to be here. This is my, I guess this is my second time here in MBTC. And yeah, I'm really enjoyed. Thank you for having me here. And I guess I would love to join as a member of MBTC. Uh, for the, and I think I would decide to be a member of MBTC because you are guys is very. For the, and I think I would decide to be a member of MBTC because you are guys is very nice and yeah, very powerful. And I think a lot of good atmosphere and positive atmosphere I get from this meeting. Thank you very much. And I would love to practice my English and to improve with you in MBTC. Thank you, Baturaji.
Okay, thank you. Wow, that was quite a feedback. I was wow, okay, I'm happy to hear that. And welcome again. All right. And next one, I would like to hear from Rena. Hello.
Uh, hello. Um.
So, so, so.
So yes, actually, when I read the invitation, I'm afraid to make a promise that I would be able to come because usually I'm still on the road on my way home. Um, so yeah, my aim today actually to observe, to learn, that's why I stay quiet. But I, I actually typing, making some notes because my focus today is on the evaluating, including the TTE, how to do that. And yeah, I noted about the opening, how to go to the point, ability to to point to improve. And then it's of worth, so it will make a good suggestion, something like that. Uh, because I believe it's, it's like a quote that you give me six hours to chop down a tree and I will spend first four hours sharpening the axe. So now it's, I'm, I'm on sharpening my axe before I chop down the tree. So that's my.
Yeah, that's beautiful. I'm glad to hear that you're actually learning, jumping and learning. That's great. All right, I would like to hear from another one, maybe from.
Can I just comment something I, I do?
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, well, I mean, you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
Rena, sorry, yeah, Rena is a distinguished Toastmaster from, uh, maybe the oldest club individually. So I feel very, you know, like it's so humbling that you come and want to observe and want to learn more from us. So thank you.
Thank you for inviting me, Miranda.
Thank you. Back to you.
Okay, thank you, Miranda. All right. Uh, next one, I would like to hear from Matur, Mr. Matur.
Yes, thank you for inviting me here. I always feel very comfortable coming over here and attending the meeting. In fact, I should tell you that I enjoy every moment that I spent over this meeting. Not very many times I get a chance to attend meetings in Indonesia because of the time difference that exists between India and Indonesia. But somehow, time doesn't make a difference. If you have the intention, if I can make it, I'll surely make it. And I will continue to attend more meetings of Magical Bali Toastmasters Club as long as you invite me. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you for all the feedbacks. I think three is enough. And yeah, thank you again, guys, for making this meeting, uh, tonight. Awesome. And I, with this, I adjourn the meeting. So see you in our next meeting.
Oh, wow. We're finally finished on time.